To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Reverend Matthias, can you call the roll?
Okay. Dr. Faub.
Present.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Matthias, present. Pastor Moody.
Present.
Dr. Randalls.
Present.
Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Shatki.
Present.
Ms. Slade.
Present.
President Baker.
Here.
Oh, here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
No move, support, sorry.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we have an agenda. And we're going to start off with a celebration.
Thank you, I would like to ask Rick Noel to come forward, please.
Good to know that Rick has been found, so.
He was just hiding from me.
Good evening Superintendent Neal, President Baker, members of the board. I am really particularly excited to be here today to introduce the 2016 recipient of the Nellie H. Stevens Travel Award, Svetlana Jovanovic, who teaches second grade at Sherwood Park Elementary. And she agreed to come and join us briefly this evening to share her travels and its impact on our students in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. So Svetlana?
Thank you so much, good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I would like to thank you so much for this opportunity. It was such a fun trip and I will remember this for my whole life. My mission, I dreaded some notes just to stay focused, I'm going to look, or I'm going to go all over the place. My mission was to visit several IB schools because Sherwood Park is supposed to become one of those schools. And I worked at Sherwood for 19 years now and I would love to stay when we become IB school. So that was my mission, to go to Europe and visit three to four schools with focus not on elementary school mostly. I picked cities that are about the same size, like Grand Rapids, because I wanted to know who their students are, how big schools are, how many training teachers had to go through and stuff like that. I was able to visit four schools, my plan was six, but when I arrived to Europe, most of schools were already closed, so they were done for the summer. So instead of visiting four elementary schools, I visited two elementary, two high schools. Zagreb, Croatia, Sarajevo, Bosnia, that's my home country, and I visited here in Austria. What I learned, just a little note that I wrote here is that the IB education I noticed is student-centered, also everybody's welcome, so anybody can attend, as well as you can pay. So IB schools are always paid, tuition is paid, and it's not funded by government. So that was my question, how would we do this here? So is it different in the United States than it's in Europe? Also, because most of the students there are students, the children of attaches or business people who live in that country for like five or six years. Let's say if the school is American International School, students who attend might not speak English. So they have a problem with language barrier like we have when we get students from different countries, however, they don't have ESL problem there. So the kids are put into a different level and they would work with the teachers for like several years until they achieve that level of language proficiency to be able to attend the regular curriculum. IB schools are divided into three levels. First one is a primary level, which are students K through three to 12 years of age. Then would be middle program, which is like same like a middle school here, and diploma program for the high school students. Interesting was like, I'm just going to read from here, what I wrote down is what that all three levels focus to educate students to become active, caring, and lifelong learners. Their mission is to address students' academic, social, and emotional well-being. There are six areas that they address, and it was really interesting to see that they pair language arts with social studies, math with art, and the science with physical and social education. And every school there has like a wheel that I printed from internet to see how they correlate and inter, they are interwoven in between, which I guess I never thought about that, that the math and art would go so well together. What else? I was looking at Sherwood Park and all those schools that I attended and all those languages that their students speak and how different they are. I was just like, Sherwood is the school to do it. I mean, it's perfect, almost, you almost do all this. Our mission is to like sharing the planet, where we are in the place and time right now. So we are Global Studies Academy, I would just add to this perfectly. So count on me, I would like to be part of that, I definitely teach, I would love to go to all necessary training. I would like, I'm going to go back to Europe next year anyways, I would like to, and visit a couple more schools, I'm really interested to learn more. Just open can of worms for me, it's so interesting, thank you.
A good can.
And the best part of this evening is she's brought something for the board.
Some like chocolate for you guys to share.
I'll distribute those.
Yogurt, strawberry, and yeah, it's for you to share.
Thank you.
That was very fun.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations.
All right, thanks. Next, we have public comment for board agenda items. Do we have any cards?
We do not.
Okay, thanks. Secretary's report.
Okay, wow. School's around the corner, folks, so we have to, we have to start getting ready, our mentality. August 2nd is the state primary, and it's taking place on August 2nd. Additional information regarding who's running and at various seats is available at www accesseskent.com. We need to get out the vote, this is so important, that we vote and get those folks that we want. As well, that's coming up is November 8th, 2016, is the general election. For nominating petitions have been filled out with the city clerk on behalf of the following individuals. And again, I won't read the names, but there are about nine or 10 people who are running for the open positions here on this board. So it's really important, again, to get information through Access Kent for those that are looking to see who's running for the school board open positions. They're four-year term positions for the Grand Rapids Public School Education Board from January 1st, 2017, to December 31st, 2020. And then also, of course, September 6th is the first day of school for 2016, 2017. Tuesday, September 6th is a fast approaching, and if you're new to the area, please call the community and school services at 819-2150 for information on how to register your child for school. And that's all that I have.
All right, thanks a lot. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Baker and members of the board. I would like to ask two of our partners to come forward, Michelle and Sandy. We have been working on our partnership with the Grand Rapids Student Foundation and spent some, a really good time, and we've come up with a great, a great plan, and so let them talk a little bit about it.
Great. Thank you Superintendent Neal and Dr. Baker and other members of the board for this opportunity. This has been a really wonderful time, the last six to eight months that we've spent together working on this MOU. I'm the president and principal consultant of Canary Consulting, and our team has been very privileged to work with both GRPS and SAF. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that I consider myself to be part of a GRPS family. My grandfather graduated from Central and I'm not really sure, OT6 or something, 1906 or something like that. And my father graduated from Ottawa in 1936, and my sister and brother from Ottawa in 59 and 62. And I went to Millic, as everybody that is anywhere near me knows. So thank you for that opportunity to work, one of our passions. We've really been working together to better align SAF and GRPS together and working on an MOU that really brings both organizations closer together for the purpose of having a stronger fundraising function. And John Helmhold and Mary Jo Kuhlman were our point people from GRPS, and Michelle Sikovsky from SAF, and then myself and the rest of my team. We've been meeting weekly for, it's probably six to eight months, and I remember early on, we had a discussion about how long MOUs take to draft, and I think at the time I thought, oh no, we'll get this done in a couple months, we'll be done. But you know, really, everything has to be very thoughtful and very carefully laid out. And we were, we were laying out roles, responsibilities, and how we can work together better in the future. In a lot of ways, the MOU sort of codifies a lot of work we were already doing and memorializes the work, puts into writing some of the current practices and stewardship of funds, the donation management, special donor, special donor direct proposals, those kinds of things and projects. It really puts in writing that work that we're already doing and developing, we also developed a language around the current work and best practices that we're doing together. What was really interesting was when we really started evaluating how much money you're raising together, it really is significant. It's in the many millions of dollars that between GRPS and SAF are raising. And so pulling together and aligning so that we have a department that actually reflects the amount of money that we're raising, really made some, really made good sense. And so some of the highlights of our MOU included ensuring full and open communication between the two organizations and its leaders, solidifying our processes and timelines for GRPS to establish its priorities and strategic direction to SAF so that our fundraising is really raising money for your strategic direction. Establishing shared resources to leverage the size and services of the district, including shared space, access to district communications, information technology services, copying and mailing, and those kinds of things. Probably the biggest and most important thing, coordinating and developing an annual fundraising plan, and how to handle things like unrestricted gifts, restricted funds, endowment plan gifts, and special campaigns like the campaign, capital campaign we're planning. And really, we're already working together, much more closely aligned. Again, it's been a great process, and I am so happy to have been part of the process. And I think Michelle will add in.
Yes, well, thank you for having me today. It's so nice to see everybody. I think some of you have heard me say this, but it bears repeating, that I do actually have the best job in the world because I get to go out there and share with the community the wonderful things that are happening in the district and invite the community to invest in that work. And that is my privilege to do and my greatest pleasure. And so to take it to the next level and say, how do we have an MOU so that we can be more strategic and more aligned with both the incredible present that we have in Grand Rapids Public Schools, but also the awesome future for both our district and our students is just, it's inspiring to me. And I'm so grateful to be able to work with Sandy and John Helmhold and Mary Jo Kuhlman, who have all been part of the process over the last several months. And so we are really looking forward to even a stronger and better year in the future. And so thank you, and we're just really excited about the MOU. If we can answer any questions, we're happy to do that.
Questions?
Just thanks.
Thank you.
I just want to comment, I just want to express my appreciation. I know the level of analysis and detail that you guys went through and trying, kind of mapping all the fundraising activities and aligning them, and I just, I have deep appreciation and for bringing everything together, and I'm very confident that the impact is going to be significant, the work that you've laid out. So thank you, Sandy, and thank you, Michelle, really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So I had a slight, I have a couple of questions. It does seem like, so there's a couple of different focuses. One is that there's an emphasis specifically on Grand Rapids Public Schools now, and there wasn't necessarily that. It also seemed like there's a shift in the role of the superintendent and the board member that are members, is that correct?
Okay, let me address both of those first. The Student Advancement Foundation started and has always existed to support the Grand Rapids Public Schools solely. This puts it very clearly in writing. Our board went through strategic planning about two years ago and reaffirmed that commitment because we believe in the Grand Rapids Public Schools, the leadership, the teachers, the staff, and the students. And think it's the place, if you want the best school district for your kids, this is where it's at. So it's Student Advancement Foundation, we are 100% Grand Rapids Public Schools. Your second question about changing the roles, I think, of the ex officio board members? It doesn't change them, it just makes them a little more active and allows them to really have their full legal function as part of the board and subject to all Michigan laws in terms of conflict of interest and things like that. Yeah, it really will hopefully help all of us to be aligned and stay together, so.
Should be great for kids, great for the students in the district. Thank you.
Right for the kids, so.
A huge one.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have a few excellent items here. Can I get a motion for the executive exempt contract extensions?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Any discussion? Questions? Call the roll.
Okay. Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Faub?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Matthias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes. Great. Actually, for the next three, I think I'm going to ask that we get some explanation from, okay, so Ken?
So I would ask for Larry O. to come forward for the sublease, and then I would ask Ken to come down and join, because in the, these three sort of go together. And John is at the museum for the grant, possible the $10 million.
Yeah, so, so think positive thoughts, I heard that, you know.
So slight change.
Just $10 million that's fake, you know. And public recognition across the country.
Yes, absolutely.
So that, there's more movement and the?
Yeah, they're videotaping about showing off.
So John Helmhold could be here tonight for this, he was originally going to address this, but we have very capable fellows here to do it.
So yeah, before we, so before we get put this up for a motion, but if you want to explain what the sublease agreement is, just like everybody knows.
Well, good evening, Dr. Baker, Superintendent Wetherall Neal, and board members. The Van Andel Museum School Sublease Agreement has been a work in progress for a number of months now. It actually started way back when we weren't sure whether or not we'd get the 54 Jefferson Building or not, whether they have to lease that. So initially included aspects related to that whole building too. So what this simply does is lays out between us and the museum, the use of the Van Andel Museum facility, as you're all aware, we're, there's a four and a half million dollar renovation going on there to build new classrooms to begin this next year with sixth and seventh grade. And this, the sublease agreement, it's a little complicated, the ownership of the museum property, the city actually owns the property and leases it to the museum. This is why this is a sublease, because we will be subleasing that classroom space from the museum itself. This lays out that arrangement, it includes both the lease of the classroom space as well as, if you look at appendix, the appendix, it talks about professional service, appendix B, professional services agreement. So there are other uses, our students get use of things like a Chaffey Planetarium, demo lab, Galleria, things like that, with museum personnel actually providing the education part of that. So we also have laid out in the sublease agreement, the compensation to the museum for their time spent with our students. So we've got some estimates in there in terms of professional staff. The agreement does say that we do true up the actual use of their staff at the end of the year. In fact, this first year, the estimates were actually high, we did not, they did not use as much time as we'd anticipated. So that's what it lays out going forward, we like get this thing signed, have it in place when we begin school in the fall. And it just covers the downtown Van Andel Museum Center, as you know, 54 Jefferson, we will own when we close on that. And so that's just, just to address the Van Andel Museum location.
All right, thanks. Any questions?
I just want to say I spent a bit of time at the museum last week, we had tutor training over there, and all the stairway is hanging, for our students, the stairway is hanging next to the whale, and you can hear all the construction going, it's like, oh, I want to be, I want to be 10 again and go to that school. It's pretty exciting.
We all do, yes.
All right, can I get a motion to support?
No move. Support.
Let me support, yeah, there you go, thanks. All right. All right, call the roll.
Okay, Ms. Slade?
Yes.
Dr. Faub?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Matthias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Shatki?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes. All right, and then we have two purchases sells. Can you explain the sells and then also some of the process?
The first one is for the Park Building, it's at the end of Fuller on Adams. The purchase agreement is with Rockford Construction, although they had, there's a group of investors. And it's part of a plan that they have for that area of town. Both of them are at appraised value. And John can do a much better job explaining how they're going to invest, and I believe he sent out emails.
Explain what those are. So the first is to expand the mix of homeownership and affordable housing, right there in the area. The second is to create job employment, which we're really excited about, and entrepreneurship with our families right in that area. The third is to support education and community health for the benefit of everyone that lives in the area. And they're going to partnership, partner with Dickinson School and that entire area for our families, and that will also include our students and families at Southeast Career Pathways. And so we're really excited for our children and our families to be able to benefit from this, and we see this as something very positive for the Grand Rapids Public Schools and our students.
The Park Building was vacated a year ago by Head Start. We have no purpose in mind for that building, and it's sitting vacant currently. There's questions, otherwise I can go on to?
Do they have any specific plans for the property or, at this point, or?
Nothing other than what Mrs. Neal read.
Yeah, it's part of an overall general plan.
Which is really nice. It's, so it's, really, they will take that entire area and we will have a large footprint right there with our two schools. We have Dickinson and Southeast Career Pathways. And many of our children, many of our young people at Southeast Career Pathways, they're employed right in the area, and so they will be able to benefit through training as well. And they have been involved, this group, they've been involved with extensive community planning, and so I'm just, I'm really excited to see this for these young people in that area, from the Southeast Career Pathways, that entire family, so.
At the finance committee meeting, Mr. Helmold did comment that they really want to do the community engagement piece, and so they don't have a plan drafted because they really want to have it community-driven. So that was very neat, but it was, it's based off of, in Orlando, there's a lot of community engagement and programming, and they're sort of, they've learned from that model, and they're bringing that forward, it's been very successful.
There's also some very nice pre-K playground equipment on the site. We've included the language so we can retain that, and we're working with Matthew Barrisford to find the funding to move it, relocate it to the appropriate sites.
Got that in your budget?
He's, it sounds like he's shaking his head, he's already got that.
That's right. Matthew doesn't miss very much.
So it sounds like, I know there had been some discussion in the media earlier this year around this issue, but it, I know when I heard about this, I inquired, and I know Dr. Randalls did, about the plans for the space and how the community was going to be involved and to make sure that there was, that we were being good neighbors in terms of impacting the community. So it sounds like they have a great process planning to go forward. And what's the building used for currently? It's been?
It's empty.
And it's been empty for a while, right?
For a year.
Yeah, okay.
What did you say the appraisal was on that building? It's the number listed, I believe that, when I'm going by memory, is 325.
320.
320. We're selling it at that price or not?
Yes.
Can't get anymore?
Oh, we tried.
Especially from Rockford, you can't get anymore?
Move for approval of the purchase agreement?
Support.
All right, call the roll. Unless, any discussion, any debate? Okay.
Okay, Ms. Slade?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Dr. Faub?
Yes.
Dr. Rand, Dr. Flores, pardon?
Yes.
Matthias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Shatki?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes. And then, a second property?
The Pine Building, it's over near Leonard and Tamarack. We were approached by the Kent County Land Bank and the Dwelling Place a while back, looking for locations to expand plans for affordable housing on the northwest side. They have purchased options along Alpine Avenue from Myrtle North, which are really adjacent to Harrison Park. They were looking, they needed more sites to make their program and their application viable. And fitting within the Challenge Scholars area, we suggested they look at Pine if that site was viable. It is to them, although not the building, they have gone to the Planning Commission, and of course, that action is pending a sale. They would, they are proposing, I believe it's 23 affordable townhouse type units. There is a green space corridor on the one end, and if you've been to the site, it's a building and a parking lot. There is no green space.
There is no green space.
Except for the tree lawn. So it would be, from that standpoint, an improvement to the neighborhood. It's been sitting empty since the transformation plan was implemented. We moved the alternative high school out of there. We have no plans for the building. From our standpoint, not only would it be a good use of the space, but by bringing affordable housing in, that supports the Challenge Scholar Program. And I believe that one is, that is at appraised value, and I believe that's 295. That is an option to allow the Dwelling Place to, they need the option placed for their applications for federal funding, and it's, it would be up to a year.
That's a great way to, you know, address the problem of families being priced out of the neighborhood.
I think having housing there is a great idea. I mean, they really need to have affordable housing, so that's good for the west side.
All right, can I get a motion to support?
Move for approval.
Support.
Any discussion? All right, call the roll.
Okay, Dr. Faub?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Matthias? Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes. Approved. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to, for the consent agenda grouping?
Move for approval?
Support.
All right, call the roll.
Dr. Faub?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Matthias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Shatki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes. Approved. All right. Discussion items, I will mention. All right, discussion items I will mention here are calendar issues on, we are still planning on the 22nd for our retreat, and we will have an August 15 board meeting. I will not be here, so Vice President Ross will be leading the meeting, so I'm sure it'll be a lot of fun, so I would encourage everyone to be here and invite your friends. All right, public comment for any indie items, non-agenda or agenda. All right, superintendent's comments.
I would like to just remind everyone of the back-to-school celebration, that's gonna be held at the zoo, and it's hard to believe it's here already, but that's August 11th at 4 o'clock, so everyone, please come.
All right, can I start with Ms. Shatki and work our way this way?
Yeah, absolutely. Just a reminder to get out and have a voice tomorrow. Voting is an incredible privilege that we have, and tomorrow is a great day to be in the polls, so 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, I think, yeah. And uniforms are on sale at Old Navy, so if you need to get them, like I just did, go online and purchase those.
Hey.
Dr. Flores?
No comment.
Pastor Moody?
No comment.
Vice President Ross?
No comment.
Matthias?
It's just exciting with these sales of our buildings to be responsible in that way to the community, so kudos to the planning committees, and for those companies that have the foresight to think outside the box, in terms of the bottom line, often it's money, but we have to think of our people, and many on the west side are getting displaced right now, so to see this happening is really, really good, and to see the board be able to make sure that we, if we're gonna sell, that it fits in the plan, so thank you.
No comment.
No comment.
I have no comment either, so we are adjourned, see you all soon.